Please rise as you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Recording in progress.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, in this republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to the April 7th, 2025 City Council Meeting. And we begin every meeting with our open comment period. This is an opportunity for anyone from the public to speak on items that we will not be taking a public testimony on during a public hearing later in the agenda. Each person has up to two minutes to speak for a total of 20 minutes. I will keeping, I will be keeping track of time through a variety of methods. The clock here and the, or the stopwatch here and the clock up on the wall there. So please, please know that I may need to cut you off. Because of the limited time, we want to be sure that others have an opportunity to speak. And I'll, I request that each speaker be concise to allow more people to speak. Participants are also encouraged to limit comments generally to topics that are within the scope and jurisdiction of the council's ability to affect policy. Council members and staff do not respond to your comments during public comment, but will instead follow up on any specific requests you have separately. If you have materials to share, please give them to Ann Kiesel, the, our city clerk over there to distribute. And you will be invited up in the order on which you signed up. And so we will start with Carolyn Furrell. Sorry, I called you Carolyn, Catherine, I'm sorry.
A button until you get green. Good.
Okay, hello, my name is Catherine Furrell. And as a member of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, I am serving as a volunteer, helping to promote a worldwide movement called Just Serve. Just Serve believes in spreading hope, goodness, and unity through the vital role of volunteerism. With motivated individuals and communities, we can build united and harmonious societies. Just Serve has a free volunteer website that nonprofit, religious, and government organizations can use to list their volunteer needs, and in turn, community members can find volunteer opportunities that fit their interests. When Just Serve launched the Just Serve City Program, we thought Rochester would be a great candidate for this recognition. The Just Serve City Award is a recognition to honor cities that demonstrate an exceptional commitment to volunteering and have made a significant impact in their community through these efforts. We knew that Mayor Norton and the City of Rochester value and recognize the importance of volunteers in Rochester. We met with Mayor Norton about a year ago to tell her about Just Serve and the Just Serve City Award. She was enthusiastic about it and created and signed a city volunteer proclamation for the City of Rochester, which was one of the requirements to be a just served city. Rochester became the second city to, in Minnesota, to receive the Just Serve City Award. And tonight, we would like to present the award to her. This fall, we will be nominating Rochester to receive the global, just, the Global Just Serve City Award, and hopefully Rochester will become the first city in Minnesota to gain that recognition. The qualifications for this award are first, to be an active Just Serve City, which just means that we will be posting volunteer opportunities online and on the Just Serve website, and to post the volunteer, the city's volunteer proclamation in a visible spot such as City Hall or on the city's website, to communicate the city's commitment to volunteerism. Second, to encourage unity and city values by supporting diverse groups in their service efforts. And lastly, to formally recognize individuals for serving the community, which Mayor Norton does annually. Again, we'd like to congratulate Mayor Norton and the City of Rochester for receiving the Just Serve City Award.
Now, we do have Brianna Bly as our next speaker. Are you going to speak as well?
No, I'm just with her.
Okay, because you, you will have two more minutes if you'd like.
Oh, no. And, and then this is the proclamation that Mayor Norton signed and presented to us. So it's lovely and, and thanks for all you guys do. We appreciate it.
Thank you for bringing it in. Okay, can we have one more round of applause? This is our open comment period. Those are the two names that I had on my list. If there is anyone else who wishes to be heard during open comment period, please step forward and identify yourself, and you have ten, two minutes.
Don't have the normal four minutes, but limited down to two.
No, it's always two minutes.
Well, it wasn't until just a couple of years ago, so. But yes, I'm Molly Dennis, and I didn't sign up, but since there was time, I thought I'd come back. At the last council meeting, I came up and spoke and asked for some transparency in the use of council member time. And I have not heard back from a single council member, anyone from that email. So I will be posting it on my social media, community advocate site. So any resident or anyone who wants to visit my social, my community advocate site, I will have that email posted, and I hope that some council member will respond and hopefully show transparency in how their hours and how their time is being spent. I have received phone calls from residents who have not been able to get a hold of their current council member and have reached out to me. I have received emails and correspondence through social media. I have been having people come and say, I have not been able to re, get a hold of my council member, could you please answer this question? And so I want to know, with your wages of over $54,000 per year, brand new vehicles sitting in the parking lot, I would like to know how you are being held responsible for showing up to all of the events and your hours that are, are being used for city council business. So I recorded every single hour that I did when I was a council member, and I hope that you are doing the same. And I think that residents deserve to know where their taxpayer dollars are being spent. So if you could go, if, since my emails are not being responded to, I would appreciate having a response to residents of Rochester, because I believe they are harder working, paycheck to paycheck, and want to know that their council member, their representative is doing their job. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dennis. This is our open comment period. If there is anyone else who wishes to be heard this evening, please step forward. Seeing no one, I will close the public comment period and invite Clerk Kiesel to call the roll.
Just to note that we are having some technical issues with the cable stream tonight. So we're trying to work through that, but everything is good on YouTube and our live. So for the roll call, Councilmember Keen.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Fredericks.
Here.
Councilmember Palmer.
Here.
Councilmember Doring.
Here.
Council President Schubring.
Here.
Mayor Norton, present.
Thank you. Next up, we have the City Administrator's Report. Administrator Elms, please go ahead.
Thank you, Council President, Councilmembers, Mayor Norton, members of the public. We always start this by thanking our teammates for acting with respect, integrity, safety, and excellence in mind. So appreciate everyone, whether they are working in an office or out in the field, for the work that they do to make sure that the city is well-run and that our residents have what they need. Also, did want to just highlight a few things that are coming up this month. So I believe this is the last month where we have the artists in residence. Cassandra Buck will be at Cascade Park. So if you didn't get out to Corey Hill or Oxbow, she will be at Cascade Park, April 5th, 9th, 15th, 17th, and 19th, a variety of different hours. And you can check out that opportunity, be able to participate in that. There are materials that will be provided to those who wish to participate. You can find that on our website, as well as Olmsted County and Minnesota Pear. Also, a puzzle night and swap is happening at the Historic Chateau Theater on Thursday, April 17th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. Everything there is free and open to the public, family-friendly. There are going to be beverages and snacks available at a cost, but otherwise, people are welcome to stop by if that's something that you're into. I also wanted to note, if you are a transit rider, you are already experiencing this as of yesterday. We have service changes in effect with the relocation of the Transit Center to Central Park starting yesterday. So that will be the temporary relocation of the downtown Transit Center with relocation of the stops on Second Street between 11th Avenue and Sixth Avenue Southwest, and some other minor adjustments to the timetables and updates to Route 412 and the service path, service path there. So if you wanted to check more information out, you can go to rptride.com and check that out and get familiar with the schedules and those changes. Obviously, we have a lot of construction forthcoming, so we expect a couple of adjustments there. And I only did just want to point out that we do have the continuation of construction at Silver Lake Park, so you may have seen some fencing go up. The expanded skate park, aquatics area, upgraded playground, new basketball courts, and renovated park shelters are underway, planning to get that all done this season and be open for 2026 with a lot of new amenities. So have that to look forward to. So just be aware, a couple of sidewalk access points will be changed and some traffic shouldn't be impacted significantly, but you can check that out. And then if you are interested, at Corey Hill Nature Center on Saturday, April 12th, from 9:30 to 11:30, there is a mindful nature walk happening. It's free to the public. Will be joined by a certified guide, Laura Lenz. You can meet at the nature center, and it's about a half-mile walk, if that's something that you're interested in. And that's all I have today.
Great, thank you, Ms. Elms. That is my bike ride home, the Corey.
For people.
Nature walk. So moving on to the mayor's report. Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you much. I have a couple of things tonight. First, I want to, since I wasn't at the microphone, thank Just Serve Cities for recognizing Rochester. And on behalf of the mayor, it's been my honor to, to work with them. And they, there was a display at the National League of Cities Conference. I think, I don't know if Councilmember Wall got to see it during the, in one, in the big room there, but it was fun to be able to be part of a national movement like that and be one of the first in Minnesota. So thank you for, for both Catherine and Brianna for being here. Excuse me. I did want to mention, and I put a card in front of all of you, but also for the public at large, and yes, April 24th is a very busy night as it ends up. There are multiple events happening in the community, which happens, I think, all the time once spring hits. But Virginia Wright Peterson is University of Minnesota Rochester professor who did research for us when we were selecting the person that was going to be the focus for this statue that we are putting in Central Park downtown. She is going to give a, she's going to talk about her research, what she learned about this person, why she was selected, as well as a little bit of detail about where it will be in the park. And, and hopefully, we'll have a little bit more information about when it will be there too. We have already seen the clay mold and given it approval, so it is now on its way to be bronzed. So I don't understand the full process, but it could take several months, I understand, for that, that to happen. So if you'd like to come to the event to learn more about it, the Rochester Arts and Cultural Trust and then Virginia Wright Peterson will be at the Country Club for a talk from around 5:00 to 7:00 roughly. Also, I've missed the last City Council meeting, and I wanted to just give you a quick update. I won't go into any details, but the U.S. Conference of Mayors takes a delegation every year, and they have since 2018. They take other delegations as well, but of mayors, to Israel. And I was asked to go and accepted that invitation this year and went with nine other mayors to Israel. It's a cultural, cultural and educational exchange. I will just say, it was quite an emotional experience in many, many ways. And I was impressed with the resilience of the people throughout the region. We had an opportunity to speak with Christians, Jews, and Muslims, families of hostages, and it was, it was a remarkable experience. So just wanted to let you know that's where I was, with the U.S. Conference of Mayors and the AJC Project Exchange. There is a really nice event happening on April 26th, probably another very busy day. But if you can squeeze in a little bit of time, and there'll be, there's more information published about this, but Rochester's poet laureate is Jean Procott. She was awarded $50,000 by the Academy of American Poets as a poet laureate fellowship. And she has a, an exhibit with poets and artists that will be at the chateau. She also had some of her, one of her poems, a line from one of her poems highlighted on their recent magazine. So she's getting some national recognition, which is really, really remarkable. But if you've got some time to drop by the chateau that day, that would be really special. Did want to just mention a couple updates with the police department. They recently had their award ceremony on March 20th. Chief Franklin presented about 90 letters of recognition, commendations, life-saving awards, valor awards, and exceptional service awards to law enforcement, staff, and community members. And they, they do this annually, and it's, it's a wonderful event. I missed this year, but appreciate my stand-in attending. Last week, RPD has kicked off something called the Community Police Academy. They've done this, I think, pre-pandemic, actually. They have 24 people from across Rochester that are enrolled in an eight-week program to gain better understanding of police operations and how police work within a community. And then just a quick reminder that Safe City Nights, which RPD hosts with many others, that this year, there are going to be four events rather than six. They will be June 10th at Gibbs Elementary, June, July 8th at Jefferson, July 22nd at Harriet Bishop, and August 12th at Ben Franklin. It's a little, little different this year, but they're free and have a free meal, and I go, I know some of you go, I see you there. So thank you. Just a quick one, just to note that April 6th through 12th is National Library Week. So if you have a minute, swing by our wonderful, award-winning library. Always a great place to be. Just quickly, I handed you each a packet on your, in front of you. It's got a paper clip on it. It says sustainability recommendations and comments on it. And when we did the Rochester visioning exercise, our community members didn't go through two categories and, and give an update. So I said I would do it. And we've got some other people in the community working on future information about some of the solutions, ideas that the community had. But on this exercise, I'm not going to read, there's, I think, 13 pages of ideas, that these are all off-the-cuff things from people in our community with no lead-in, just what do you think about sustainability and what should happen? And these are all their comments from that section of the vision exercise. The topics fell under just general sustainability, energy, recycling and composting, bike, biking, bike infrastructure, pet and bike issues, green spaces, parks, trees and green spaces, transit and trains, housing and development, food, water, business, and then general comments. So I think sometimes we hear, and I think I remember hearing at the beginning, that what is sustainability? And I remember having this discussion even a year ago. And sustainability is, can be in almost every category. If you look at the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals, there are like 16 of them, because you can be sustainable in any of those major categories. And it was interesting to see the community pull out, not all of them, although education, there were, I put those under general, because there were so few of them. But pretty close, hit pretty close to all the topics that were in the SDG. So I thought that was kind of interesting. But take some time and look those over, might give you some ideas. And, and I left one with Allison, too, to see what the community's thinking and what they would like to see us do. Move of the Mayor starts April 15th through May 31st. We'll have a little bit more information out in the next week, but it's a time of year for the new council members, where in the past, I've asked council members to join with me. Some, some have done better than others, but we ask you to stay particularly active for six weeks. Set some goals for yourself. One suggestion I had is the, the community, the Med City Marathon is during this time period, and students in our community commit to walking a mile a day for 26 days or 25 days, leading up to the day of the marathon, and then they all participate in walking or running. I walked, I admit, they ran. The last mile and a quarter, or whatever it is, some of you that are runners know exactly. Councilmember Palmer, a mile and what, 26.2?
Two.
Okay, not quite a half. But they do that on the last day during the marathon. And so if you would like to participate, there may be an opportunity for us to walk that last mile and point two on that day. So there'll be a lot of activities. Bike-to-work day falls during this time, too, so hopefully you'll take that opportunity. I know some of you bike here. But please do what you can to help encourage the community during Move of the Mayor, six weeks, to stay healthy. And then just to mention, the Year About Youth has been going on. There's a lot of activities brewing on our website. We do allow people to post activities that they do about youth. And so we have been posting them on our website. And if you know of any, or if the community knows of any youth-focused activities, they can send them to us, and we'll put them on the website. I'll show up to as many as I can, as long as it doesn't involve running 26.2 miles. That's for today. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. You've got us all thinking about spring, and I will vow to ride my e-bike during that time. And I think one of my colleagues will do it regardless of that week. So moving on to our order of the agenda, are there any changes to the order of the agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion for approval?
Just to clarify, we did have a new thing for a, the financial.
Yes, and I will, yes, thanks for pointing that out, Councilmember Keen. H1 is a sale of a general obligation tax abatement bond, and the number has changed to 10,880,000, and so we'll reiterate that when the item comes up.
With, with that, I move to approve the order of the agenda.
Sec. Seconded by Councilmember Palmer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. I also wanted to point out that we are back live on the cable cast, and so thank you for that, Clerk Kiesel. Moving on to our consent agenda, I have not received any polled items from today's consent agenda. Are there any? Is that correct? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda in its entirety. Moved by Councilmember Fredericks and seconded by, do you have a question or you're seconding?
I'll second, sure.
Seconded by Councilmember Wall. Any comments?
I will vote yes on the consent agenda with the exception of F3, to which I will vote no.
With that, any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. So it passes unanimously with Councilmember Wall voting no on item F3. Moving on to our public hearings, we have one public hearing on our agenda this evening. Before I begin the public hearing, just a moment to clarify the process. First, we have staff introduction of the item, and then if there is an applicant or representative of the applicant present, they will have up to 10 minutes to discuss the item. Then I will open the public hearing. Members of the public have up to five minutes to, to speak on the item. Then we close the public hearing, and we offer the applicant to come forward for rebuttal. And then after that, invite council members to pose questions to staff and the applicant. With that, item G1 is a major land subdivision by Creekview Meadows, and the presentation will be by Desmond McGill. Go ahead, Mr. McGill.
Thank you, Council President Schubring. Mayor Norton, members of the council, good evening. My name is Desmond McGill. I'm with the Community Development Department. The applicant is requesting approval of a major land subdivision for Creekview Meadows Third. This is a subdivision of 25 lots on eight acres, all within an R1 zoning district. This is the third phase of the Creekview Meadows project. Creekview Meadows is located in the south part of the city, north of 20th Street Southeast and on the east and west sides of 37th Avenue Southeast. The GDP was approved in 2020 and encompasses a total of 67 acres, which includes 139 single-family lots, 46 attached single-family homes, and approximately 18 acres of undeveloped resource areas. Lot sizes in this third phase are generally 70 by 120 deep, and both the Development Review Committee and the Planning and Zoning Commission are recommending approval. At their March 12th meeting, the commission approved the subject request by 80 vote, subject to the three conditions in your packet. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions after, after the applicant speaks.
Thank you, Mr. McGill. Is the applicant here, and do they wish to come forward and speak? And as Mr. Twain reaches the microphone, he mentioned something to me this evening that this, tonight, is his 5,100th presentation before a city council or Planning or Zoning Commission over 56 years.
Thank you, kind of crazy.
You are a pro, so.
Thank you. With that, good evening, President Schubring and members of the council, Mayor Norton. For the record, I'm Bill Twain with WC Engineering, representing and speaking on behalf of the owner-developer Creekview Meadows. This is the third phase of a multi-phase general development plan that was approved a number of years ago. It's 25 single-family lots. Density is very similar to the first two phases of development. We've had a wetland replacement plan approved. This particular phase doesn't impact wetlands at all, but the overall site, we've had approval now, after a year and a half of work on it, to disturb less than a half an acre of the wetlands. So we reduced it from an acre and a half to a half acre. We had a traffic study that's been completed and approved by Olmsted County, because 20th Street is under jurisdiction of Olmsted County. We do have, with this phase of development improvements we need to make to 20th Street, so this is a left turn into the site. So we're planning on doing that. Planning, commission approved this unanimously. Staff is recommending approval of the three conditions, which are all related to the final plot, and we would, we're, we're in concurrence that those three, with those three conditions. So we respectfully request your approval of the preliminary plot at 25 lots for Creekview Third. Any questions you may have?
We'll invite you back after the public hearing.
Thank you.
At this point, I will open the public hearing. If there is anyone who wishes to be heard on this item, please step forward. If there's anyone who wishes to be heard on this item, please step forward. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and invite Mr. Twain back up to add more information if you need to. If not, we will open it up to questions from the council, to staff or the applicant. Councilmember Wall.
I have one for Mr. Twain. Were, were you the engineer for the original buildings on Broadway?
For which building?
The, the very first buildings in Rochester.
The second. Thank you.
Any other questions on this item? Seeing none, is there a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion. Make a motion to approve land, major land subdivision number CD 2025-001 plot by Creekview Meadows LLC with the three conditions.
Motion made by Councilmember Palmer and seconded by Councilmember Fredericks. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Thank you again, Mr. Twain, and congratulations on your historic evening here. Moving on to reports and recommendations, our first item is H1, which is the sale of a $10,880,000 general obligation tax abatement bonds for the relocation of parks and forestry operations to the Public Works and Transit Operations Center campus. And this will be presented by Finance Director Brian Anderson and Chris Hogan from our consulting group.
Yes, thank you, Council President Schubing, council members, Mayor Norton, Administrator Elms. This evening.
This evening, we do have Ms. Chris Hogan, Principal at Baker Tilly with us. She's been a longtime financial advisor for the city, and she will present the findings of the bids that just happened this morning. So that's why there is a revised resolution for you, or in front of you. With that, I will just do a quick recap. And so on February nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five, the common council did hold a public hearing to approve a resolution authorizing the use of property tax abatement based on a fifteen-year term of this project. Then on March third, the common council approved a resolution approving for competitive negotiated sale of the general obligation abatement bond, series twenty-two-five A. And this evening, after the presentation and answers your questions, we will be asking the council to award the sale of the bonds based on the information that Chris has. And we'll do all the paperwork after the fact. So with that, I will turn it over to Chris now, if that's all right, and stand by for any questions. Thank you.
This will start me. Thank you, Council President, Mayor, and members of the council. Happy to be here tonight. Chris Hogan from Baker Tilly serves the city as a municipal advisor. And like Brian said, I'm here to get the results of the city's bond sale that happened earlier this morning. So the city went to market this morning with a ten million nine hundred and eighty-five thousand general obligation tax abatement bond, series twenty-two-five A, proceeds of which those will be used to finance an expansion of the city's park maintenance building and to pay the cost of issuance of the bonds. The total cost of the project is forty-three million, of which the bonds are paying approximately eleven point six. The repayment term of the bonds is for fifteen years. Debt service is going to be repaid, tax abatement bonds, a tax payment revenues, and ad valorem taxes. This is a graph of the bond buyer. This is, I think I went, let's see that one. Nope. This is the graph of the bond buyer. I did go too fast. There we go. This is like the important slide. So this information is, shows that in mid-January, we were projecting the bonds would sell with a true interest cost of four point one-three. We updated our expectations last week based on last week's interest rate market, and we were projecting estimated true interest cost of three point seven-eight. The winning bid came in today at three point five-four, so an exceptional, good rate. Pricing results ended up estimating the average annual debt service savings at ten thousand a year from where we started to actual pricing. And I just wanted, I'll talk a little bit more about this, but there's a lot of disruption in the market right now, given the tariffs last week. So there really was question on how the bonds would price today. So that all come with a number of bids, and the results have been really quite fantastic. So now we'll move on to the graph. So this is the bond buyer index. It is an industry that measures high-yield municipal bonds in the twentieth year. And there's a five-year graph, and on the end is where we're at, even though it says January. It's a quarterly graph over five years. I guess I just would note that since beginning of the year, really, the market has been pretty volatile, up and down, pretty much weekly. So that is the graph. And here is a snapshot of the bid. So there were seven bidders. You can see the list of bidders. The winning bid or the lowest bid was by Piper Sandler with their true interest cost of three point five-four. But if you look at how close all of those bids really are, that's really a remarkably great competitive sale. And then the last one is just a pricing. I'll show a little bit more detail on this slide. So the bonds, here's the actual pricing that was received from Piper. It was bid with a premium, meaning the coupons are higher than the yield. And it generates, it actually generated about one point three million more proceeds. So we were able to use some of the proceeds to put towards the February one, twenty-twenty-six interest payment. And then the rest we used to downsize the bonds. So that's why the principal amount changed to be ten million eight eighty. Part of a public bond sale is a rating process you go through. So we had a rating process with the city, S and P and Moody's. Both Moody's and S and P assign a triple-A rating, which is the highest you can get. You know, why do you do a rating? Why do bonds get rated? Well, it's a measure of the city's financial strength and ability to repay the bonds. It serves the independent third-party assessment that investors can use as their due diligence when they want to, when they're interested in purchasing the bonds. And the stronger the rating, the lower the interest cost is. So of course, you benefit from a stronger rating. This is just a table that shows the three major credit rating providers, which are Moody's, Fitch, and S and P. Shows the highest-grade credit down to the lowest-grade credit. And again, you're rated S and P and Moody's triple-A. That was hard to see. Both rating agency will provide a written report. They'll provide, they'll give information or details on the credit strength, credit challenges. They'll provide factors that could lead to downgrade and factors that could lead to upgrade. In this case, that's not relevant, since you guys are triple-A. So this is small to read, but I tried to summarize. There's so much information in these reports. But the central topics really were the sophisticated management, robust financial planning, the rapidly growing economic base anchored by Mayo Clinic, significant new multi-residential development in the last two years, modest total leverage and fixed cost. Really, the only credit challenge they taught, they mentioned was resident income metric lagged the median for similar-rated credits. And then factors that they said could lead to a downgrade would be slowdown in the economy, leading to weaker economic metrics, increase in long-term liabilities, weaker revenue performance. So I recommend approving the resolution awarding the ten million eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand bonds to Piper Sandler and Company based on their little bid of three point five or six percent. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Hogan. Any questions? Councilmember Keen, go ahead.
Yes, thanks for being here, Ms. Hogan. I, just on that, on the ratings thing, if we were through whatever, if we were doing this a year from now and our rating was down one to, instead of triple-A, would it, what type of impact would you project on the three point five-four interest rate?
If you were to drop a notch, which would be then the double-A one category, three basis points?
Okay, so, and that could be configured back into the, how much per year of interest we're paying on it?
Right, right. And that's just estimate right now. I would say the risk of that happening is so, so slim. But yes, there is always the cost, the lower the credit rating score.
But, but again, that one drop, it sounded nominal, the three basis points, or is that?
It is nominal, but it still would have some impact on cost.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Wall?
The slide that showed that we have a ten thousand dollar savings, is that from the original estimate of four point one-three or the reduced second estimate?
Good question. It's from the original, four point one-three.
Thank you.
So two months ago.
Any other questions from councilmembers? You may be seated. Oh.
No, I was just going to make a motion.
Oh. Ms. Hogan, you can be seated and make your motion. Councilmember Keen?
I'd like to make a motion to award the sale of the general obligation tax abatement bond, series twenty-two-five A, fixing their form and specifics, and directing their execution and delivery, and providing for their payment.
Second. Motion made by Councilmember Keen and seconded by Councilmember Doring. Further discussion?
Just a clarification, I didn't say the ten point eight-eight million. Just clarify that because of the slight change.
Absolutely. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously, thank you. Moving on to our item H2, which is a home ownership creation program for Westbury Recommendation. And this will be presented by our own housing coordinator, Taryn Edens.
Good evening, councilmembers, council president, mayor, city administrator. Name is Taryn Edens with the Community Development Department. And I'm here to recommend the Westbury project for the homeownership creation program. So just to remind you, I've had the privilege of hearing, of presenting some of this to you very recently. But just for the public to understand, the homeownership creation program, once more. It does align with the most recently established strategic priorities. In particular, it aligns with affordable living. The homeownership creation program serves to incentivize or just that, to incentivize the creation of for-sale housing. Specifically, number one there, a previous priority was to construct market-rate and affordable for-sale housing. So this does align with council strategic priorities to support the homeownership creation program. Our last housing needs assessment, which you know, we've just received some draft information for a new one. But when you whittle it down to the housing needs in our community, there are many. If we were to show five, one of them does include the need to create a homeownership opportunity specifically in our community. I will share the new housing needs assessment continues that need, so that has not changed. Some quick statistics from the last study just show essentially our population is growing. The demand for for-sale housing specifically continues to grow, and we aren't meeting that demand. Last study showed we're meeting about sixty-eight percent of that demand over the next decade. And due to shortfalls, as far as production goes, we need to sort of make up for that deficit. So the next slide just shows you in the last, you know, handful of years, how many for-sale dwellings have been created and permitted in the city of Rochester. And we average about two hundred a year. And as mentioned in the last slide, we need about nine hundred and sixty a year to make up that deficit. Once again, the housing needs assessment doesn't show that changing, and this need to continue to be evident. I realize many of you know the need for this. There are many housing needs in our community. For-sale is particularly needed in supporting the opportunity to build generational wealth in our community. The homeownership creation program was launched in twenty-twenty-two as a pilot program. To date, it's supported almost three hundred housing units. Over four point seven million has been allocated to support those units. The picture you see before you is one of those supported units in the Pebble Creek subdivision. It's a two-bedroom, two-bath. What we're finding is this program has been helpful in aiding in that supply as an incentive, both to create it as well as aid in the opportunity to lower the price of the final home built. We're finding this is being leveraged with other tools such as a zero-interest loan that the coalition has created. And we anticipate more applications. We're hearing that there's a desire to participate in this opportunity and contribute to our for-sale housing needs. To explain the program, the builder can apply via a consolidated application. And then there are two ways to qualify. One is if you're planning for less than fifty units, you could apply for fee reimbursement. So you get that benefit after the home is built. We see that that's usually applied as down payment assistance to the homeowner. To qualify, the home has to be sold at a certain value or less, which in this case is four hundred and twenty-six thousand one hundred dollars. It's explained to folks, that seems very high. So essentially, what we look to do is create flexibility in what that line in the sand would be. We did the math and found that a household earning one hundred and fifty percent of our area median income could afford this value as a ceiling cost. So that is our ceiling. The reimbursement is up to twenty thousand dollars. So it is whatever fees would be paid to the city gets reimbursed. The other way to qualify is for an upfront subsidy. So we're looking to incentivize the creation of high-volume of for-sale housing, since we know that's a need. So if a proposal included fifty or more units, you could qualify for an upfront subsidy. And that is what's being presented to you tonight. So in that opportunity, we ask in exchange, in exchange that a portion of those units, be it that four hundred and twenty-six value or less, the remaining just have to be under five hundred thousand dollars to qualify. And you'll see some of the breakdowns there, how many of those units we want to be under that value. This homeownership creation program is funded with the Economic Vitality Funding that was supported through the sales tax extension in twenty-twenty-three. So just a reminder, that's the funding source of this program. Specifically, it was approved to allocate fifty million dollars to the Economic Vitality Fund. A big part of that is contributing up to thirty-three million in housing creation specifically. How can we support housing creation through sales tax funding? There's a couple of ways. One is infrastructure investment. We know that's a high cost to housing that often gets passed down to the owners or occupants. We have an existing housing trust fund in our community that's been a proven model that we could contribute to. And then the last one there is fee incentives or the homeownership creation program, right? How can we incentivize adding to our for-sale supply specifically? This is the only, the last project that was supported for an upfront subsidy, which is the Prairie Ridge subdivision that was approved by the council last year. So just giving you some quick context, this is the only other one we've done. In that case, it supported two hundred and one homes. And about nineteen percent of those units were below that value. The contribution was about twenty thousand dollars per unit, so that's the average. Just so you understand what that contribution is. The ask before you tonight is the Westbury subdivision. This is proposed by Bigelow Homes. It proposes two hundred and nineteen for-sale homes. One hundred of those homes would be below our ceiling value to be affordable to households under one hundred and fifteen percent of the AMI. So they're priced between three hundred and fifty and three hundred and eighty thousand, so significantly below that ceiling. They could then price all other homes one hundred and nineteen at five hundred thousand or below. So this definitely exceeds our minimum requirement. Almost half of those units, forty-six percent, are meeting that required for-sale value. So the amount of subsidy requested is four million three hundred and eighty thousand, which is twenty thousand dollars per unit. There is a variety of homes proposed, two, three, four-bedroom, and a variety of different architectural styles as well. So with that, what's being asked of council tonight is to approve a resolution to contribute four million three hundred and eighty thousand dollars to the Westbury subdivision to support the creation of two hundred and nineteen for-sale homes. With that, I'll pause for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Edens. Questions for Ms. Edens? And I do also see the CEO, Mike Paradise, from Bigelow Homes in the audience. I don't know if we have to change our rules in order to ask him questions, if anyone wishes to. I don't see anyone, so questions? Mr. Wall, go ahead.
This is an inarticulate question, unfortunately. In the community, there just is a great deal of unease about what is affordable. That somehow we should be able to offer three-bedroom, two-bath homes for a small down payment and small mortgage. I know I didn't believe that my first home was affordable at fifty-five thousand dollars and seventeen point six percent interest. That was hard. How do we get the message? I know you talked about the hundred and fifteen percent of AMI. How do we get the message to the community that this is, these are not necessarily starter homes for a kid coming out of college looking? You understand how inarticulate I am here?
Yeah, the question is, right, how do we make it clear the need to support housing at this price point, right, when there are needs all over? And folks, not everyone in our community could afford a home like this, right? I went back to sort of the top five housing priorities, and I know I'm repeating things many of you already know, but we see housing as a continuum, right? There are many needs, many income levels, and we have a short supply of many kinds, right? This is one in particular where we've agreed that we want to prioritize as we have other community resources to support many other housing needs that we have, right? So just as a reminder, our top five needs are new homeownership opportunities. So we need more of them. Our supply is low. When the supply is low, that can impact the market and folks living in different places, right? Specifically, we have a disparity among people of color and homeownership. Housing for those earning less than fifty percent of the area median income is a need. We need additional senior housing, and then we need to preserve our existing housing stock. I often talk about housing as a puzzle and recognize, once again, the housing continuum has many needs. And the ability to increase the supply in one space makes availability to other needs. What I'd also like to communicate as part of this program, right, with a twenty thousand dollar subsidy, we would expect to see the value of that home lessen by twenty thousand. So in a way, it is also directly impacting the cost of this home. So it's always a difficult narrative to explain when our needs are so great and explaining that this overall will impact our housing stock in many ways, even though it seems like a very high value.
And how different are we than any other city about our size, little more? And how different are we than any other city about our size, little more, little less?
Our housing needs are not unique, I would say. We've been in a perma crisis for decades. Rochester is not unique in that way. In fact, we have a lot of things to be grateful for, but at the same time, having limited supply impacts, impacts the cost of housing, both for sale and rent, right? So the more we can contribute to the supply, the more it impacts everyone's availability and choice in housing.
Thank you. Councilmember Palmer.
Well, I'm on the housing coalition, and I got to read the draft report of the Maxfield study. It's 360 pages, and it's interesting reading. One of the things I'll say to Mr. Wall is that Rochester is really unique because we have the housing coalition. We work well with the county. We work well with the mail clinic. We work well with our partners with that, and we really are ahead of the game, and I'm proud of that fact. One of the things that came up in facts in this study was in 2015, I believe it was, the average salary to afford a new home was $38,000. So that's how much housing has gone up. One of the things that shocked Maxfield and shocked me was that we went from 71% homeownership down to 61% in the last five years in Rochester, and that's a huge number. The DMC area, about 90% of it is all rental, so there's very, which is not surprising to any of us. You know, we only did 200 houses about last year. In 1979, the city of Rochester did about 180 houses. We had 21% interest rates. We were in the middle of an energy crisis. So the last five years, we've done well with our apartments. We still need more apartments. We still need all types of new housing to come along. But with the homeownership, it's huge. One of the other things in the Maxfield study that says is that it's about $380,000 of net asset for somebody who owns a home, and if you're a renter, it's $10,000. So building that wealth is very, very important. And they're looking at our BIPOC community in Rochester and where we are percentage on that, because I think we're better than what they've been saying. But those are just some of the highlights of this report, and it's the third time we've done it. We did it after COVID because things, as we all know, COVID changed a lot. But there's a lot of information in that report. It's, it takes a while to read here. Yes? So those are my comments on this. I'm very supportive of this. I think Bigelow is doing a good job on this. And if you really look at it, it is kind of infilling because it is fitting into other subdivisions that we have in Northwest Rochester. They build a quality house, and I'm looking forward to approving this.
Thank you for sharing, Councilmember Palmer. Councilmember Keen.
Yes, thanks for being here. And again, I think this is, you know, this is, this is coming from the policies that we did about putting the money aside with towards this home stuff. One of the things that going through this, though, that bothers me or worries me, and I need to get some understanding here, we're talking about upfront, and then we're talking about houses that are built by 2029 or 2030. Lots can change over those years. What is the protection of these sort of upfront things that if the economy or the house building changes dramatically, that people don't say, sorry, we can't compete on our side? How is our investments protected?
Yeah, great question. A master affordable housing agreement was included in the package, and some things you'll find on that are remedies on default, right? So if things, situations and events happen, there are provisions in there for payback to the city essentially. Just as well, the contributions are made after certain milestones are made or completed, right? So there are four milestones in which payments would be made. So 25% of the full contribution, for example, would be issued when a grading plan is approved, 25% when the first building permit is issued for phase one, 25% when the first permit is issued for phase two, and then the final when 90% of the homes are constructed. So that serves a multitude of ways. One can be to incentivize to complete that work as soon as possible, right? So we do have some provisions in there to protect the investment as well as incentivize the ability to do as quick as possible.
Good, good. I saw those, and the point I was hoping to bring out is those will also affect how much the home or the developer has put in.
Right.
So that he's invested in this as much as the city is. And so I'm, again, I want to get out there that I think we are protecting. This isn't just upfront, and hopefully we'll deliver at the end. There is management steps along the way. I also wanted to touch on this other one, just this difference between this idea of there's 200 houses, 219 houses, but 100 have these price things. It appears there's two different policies being filled here. One is to try to get more affordable housing, but I think more important in this, and it isn't showing up in, like in these discussions, is we're just trying to add to the volume, to the supply side. Can you talk about adding to the supply side? And maybe this is what you mean by the continuum or the puzzle?
Yeah, that's exactly what I mean by considering our housing needs as a continuum, right? To some degree, we needed comfort level from the council and the city of what we would be willing to help contribute towards to incentivize housing as far as setting a value. But right, just as well, one of our primary goals is just to make an impact on the supply of housing that we need. So it's sort of a both end approach. We wanted to set the line in the sand of that maximum value, but one of the underlying goals really is to just contribute towards our supply needs for the community.
And last thing, and it gets more of a discussion, but just Councilmember Palmer makes the point about homeownership, and a lot of times we talk about single family homes as the same as homeownership, when we know right now it's not going that way. One of the things driving us from 71 to 61% is the number of single family homes that are becoming rentals. Is there any sort of policy or city policy that we're saying, we're okay with the homes like if people are moving from starter homes into this, if those homes are being bought up as investments or as rental property? Does that fulfill our Maxfield goals when it talks about homeownership, just because we're building single family homes if they're only being used as rentals?
I guess what I would say is another provision of this particular agreement, which is indirectly answering your question, is that the builder agrees to record a deed restriction that the homes cannot be rented for seven years. So we do intentionally write out that these must serve a for sale purpose. So I'm speaking to this, just this specifically. I would also add to a point made as far as our overall homeownership rate reducing, our multifamily unit count went up. So you'll see that that sort of balances our population as far as our rentals went up. So that should impact homeownership rates, I would argue. But for this particular subdivision, it is protected for seven years that they cannot be rented.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, and I saw some of that stuff in there with the seven years. But remember, we're also looking at these as not starter homes, people moving from other homes into them. And what we've seen is a lot of the back purchasing of those aren't new families buying homes. It's going into the rental market. There clearly is a huge market for people who want to come here for one, two, three year assignments, or just have decided they don't want to be homeowners. They want someone else to take care of that. But when we're working towards this goal of homeownership, I want to make sure just by building single family homes, you're not necessarily fulfilling that.
Yes, that's, that's true. We're not necessarily fulfilling that, right? We're contributing to the continuum by creating more supply. We're not completely controlling the market in that sense, but we're contributing towards the supply and having a say on this particular subdivision.
Yeah. So again, I know what we're trying to do here. I like the idea of this over 50, this idea of like tweaking the market and pushing and making these things so that we get that instead of 200 homes between this and other projects will be in the 300, 400. And I think that that in itself is a good goal, so I'm going to support this tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Keen, and I appreciate you bringing up that gap there, and I think that's a future policy discussion with the buying up of the homes. So Councilmember Doring.
Yeah, just a quick question too. I plan to support this as well, and I appreciate our efforts to incentivize homeownership. I'm wondering if you could give us an update on Prairie Ridge and what the status of that development is, percentage done, things like that, where we're at?
Yeah, I would say some delays are being experienced, but essentially mass grading is occurring. So it doesn't impact the overall schedule very much, but if you drive by, you'll see, you'll see a lot of earthwork and continuous conversations are being had with the city and that developer for forward progress.
Yeah, the reason for my question is every once in a while, I'm asked by a constituent, you know, we're incentivizing homeownership, but it seems like these projects take a long time to come to fruition. So I appreciate the update, and I hope those who have, who've contacted me just heard the update from you. So thank you.
I do think you'll see an update formally at council in the coming weeks.
Thanks.
Councilmember Miller.
Just a couple of questions to build on Mr. Keen's question and probably Mr. Walls as well. But when we look at the Maxfield priorities, one, which we're focusing on here, but then also five, preservation of existing housing stock. Could you clarify how Maxfield looks at that? And is that also existing ownership stock, or is that just housing stock of any type?
It's a great question. I would say that speaks more to the last housing needs assessment. That's feedback we have on this one that's less clear. If you're asking me, generally that's pointed at existing rentals more so than for sale. So we're talking about that middle density product that offers affordable rents just because it's existed for years. So specifically, Rochester is a high volume of that product that creates affordability just by existing.
Okay. And I guess the other question would be about this graph that's in here about single family home permits or new house starts. Is there more data that we could add to look at, again, this net effect, right, of loss of, do we, are we able to track houses that go from owner occupied to having a rental certificate, particularly in the starter home range?
I would say, do we have the ability? Yes, but not easily. So I know this is a question that's been raised, and we're having some internal conversations around technical abilities.
And I guess, thank you for that, because I'm very curious about it. And I remember also from the Maxfield update, we got a preview of that there's this new element coming out of an increase in smaller sized households. How would you think about that in our homeownership creation program? We're hearing about two, three, four bedrooms, you know, and at the same time, I often hear conversation about how we have older residents living in homes that are too large for them. So we're definitely seeing a need addressed here, and I plan to support this, but I just wonder about how we're thinking particularly about these very small homes, the homes that might serve one or two people very well. And how, how might this program overall, you know, that has $33 million, and should this pass tonight, you know, moves up to a little over 8 million of that committed? How are we thinking about the creation of these smaller homes that do give people a first start, particularly if there are pressures in the market on, on, you know, creating investment opportunities?
Yeah, I think that's something we're reviewing and considering right now as we process all of the findings for the Maxfield report. Does that shape or change our five priorities? And should we then change our policies and programs and what we want to incentivize? So I do think those will be the questions. What I will say is the fee reimbursement side of the program that doesn't come before council is often supporting smaller, denser products, and we're seeing that supported. But I think that's a fair question that I don't have an answer for today, but we expect to consider.
Great. Last question. Oh, as far as the 100 homes in the 350 to 380 range, and then 119 homes under 500, are those part of this requirement, right? I mean, is the city evaluating the ultimate sales price and making sure that those are happening? Because I hear about these unlocks for the subsidy at milestones of project development, but is that also considering that making sure that these homes are built as presented to us in these price ranges?
Yeah, great question. One way that we measure that is by requiring a recorded deed restriction that essentially limits the resale value of those 100 homes. So that is something we would track, something we consider when we're doing the last payout, and there's some language in there to consider notice to the city when transfer occurs as well. So that's how that's tracked.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Councilmember Wall.
Thank you. I join President Schubring and Councilmember Palmer in thankfulness for Mike Paradise's presence here tonight and for the good work that Bigelow is doing in our city, much of it in the Third Ward. Thank you very much.
Is it right before a motion is made? Can I make a clarification? The resolution has a typo in the last phrase. It says 201 homes, but it should be 219 for the record. I've communicated this to the clerk. Thank you.
Okay. Just a final comment. I want to commend the previous council for initiating this program and along with staff and with the, the price point at 350 to 380, I think we're moving in the right direction. And again, Mike and his team at Bigelow Homes, I think one of the objectives here is also to infuse the market with a, a home that is at a price point that shows that that for the builders can be profitable as well. So I appreciate that for the city of Rochester as well. So with that, is there a motion on this item?
I'll move to adopt a resolution approving the contribution of $4,380,000 to the Westbury Development to support the creation of 219 for sale homes via the homeownership creation program.
I'll second.
Moved by Councilmember Doring and seconded by Councilmember Keen. Any further discussion, Mr. Doring? Mr. Keen, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess I want to make sure just for the, again, put on the record here. Remember, this is, the start of this comes from the Economic Vitality Fund. This is, I mean, there's always the questions on subsidies and this idea, are we moving money from like Rochester existing homeowners or property owners towards this? And the answer is we're not. We're really looking at this, second, this idea of the sales tax and how are we supporting the economy we want to have here through sales tax? And this is through the Economic Vitality Funds. And again, while I think it's important that we watch how these are used and make sure they come to bear, I want to make the point that it's not the subsidy coming from our taxpayers to try to get these houses going. It's really coming from the sales tax across the extended community.
Further comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Edens, and thank you, Mr. Paradise, for being here. And you can stay right where you are, Ms. Edens, and you can take item H3, which is the AnyPath Home Charter Agreement.
Yes, you've got me again. Good evening again, everyone. Now I'm here to talk to you about the AnyPath Home Charter Review. This is sort of an update. Last I brought this to you was on March 10th via a study session to provide some more information on AnyPath Home as an agency that's created as a homeless response system. So the ask before you tonight is to provide feedback on the charter for your consideration with the possibility of your considering to approve and sign on to the charter. AnyPath Home is a reminder is a group of partner agencies working together for a common purpose to ensure that everyone has a home. This is a shared purpose, right? It means whatever work we do, this should guide our work. Essentially, if I were to really try to boil down what it means, it means anyone experiencing homelessness could be assigned a case manager, and that resource stays with them until they achieve housing and just as well would be with them afterwards. That's one way that I would boil that statement down. The agencies that helped to create AnyPath Home are listed, but just to name them, they include Change Services, Catholic Charities of Southern Minnesota, Dorothy Day House, River Valleys, Continuum of Care, The Landing Immense, The Salvation Army, Rivers Community Action Centers, Zombre Valley Health Center, Olmsted County, and the city of Rochester. Really, those groups came together to form a collective impact. So a lot of those groups primarily serve as providers are already providing resources to this community and population. They're doing a great job at what they do, and we found that there is an opportunity to create a collective impact in which we're building on each other's resources to better serve this population. And really, that's the purpose that AnyPath Home seeks to achieve, to work within our existing resources to better serve that community as they seek housing. Tonight, I'm presenting a charter that was attached. What is a charter? It is a governance document. It is intended to be a starting point, not a destination, I would say. It includes specifics around decision making and member commitments. What I will just say now is this has been approved by the other agencies, the county including, and once again, this is an opportunity to receive feedback. I would, I would say that the charter is pretty open ended, I guess, for opportunity to receive feedback. And so really, what the intent of the charter is, is to say, we agree to work together essentially towards this purpose, and that's what it's intended to do. I'll add also, one of the first steps, what a charter is not, is not bylaws. So those would still have to be created by an advisory board, and the first year plan is including drafting a work plan, which is going to be started right away by the AnyPath Home Director. Other things included as far as specifics in this charter or things to be aware of, the Rochester Area Foundation is the backbone agency or the fiscal agent essentially for this third party group. We relate it to the Housing Coalition for Rochester Area Housing, but they are different. That is essentially a funder's collaborative. This is a bit different in that sense, but it works similarly in that it's sort of facilitated by Rochester Area Foundation. They provide a specific role as a legal entity for funding. They employ the staff who is contracted, and they are the formal approval of funding. It's proposed to be a nine member advisory board with two local officials, one from the city and one from the county, each accompanied by one staff person, three community service providers, which is intended to be comprised of providers that were participated in created AnyPath Home as shown earlier. which is intended to be comprised of providers that were participated in created AnyPath Home as shown earlier. And to be determined still is the inclusion of four at-large community members who shall be approved by this, the starts of this advisory board. And then lastly, the AnyPath Home Director would also be included. Member commitments. So for what's before the city to consider tonight, once again, looking for feedback on the charter. There is an opportunity to collect that feedback and make changes if that would be the desire of the council. But specifically, what is being committed to by members? To reiterate, there's no funding asked before you this evening. It's an implementation of that shared purpose, a collective impact model, which means agencies work together towards the same common goal. Participating in AnyPath Home activities, data management and data sharing. I will say this is most important for agencies that have access to the database, which is also known as HMIS. The city is not a user in that sense, so that is more important for those agencies that have users in that, in that system. And then it outlines a minimum of two hours of monthly participation at those meetings. So this is a very high level overview. It's included in your packet. And once again, looking for feedback and specific questions for your consideration on this effort.
All right, thank you, Ms. Edens. First off, I do understand that it's a governance document, so it doesn't speak to the objectives. I was taken with, you know, what are the objectives? I mean, I look and I, I see that the, the group will be developing those objectives. So I'm going to speak to the governance document and kind of a, a very granular issue. But it, where it says steering committee term, to be eligible to be on the steering committee, members must have a minimum of one-year experience on the advisory board. There isn't an advisory board yet, so that, and then, and then going down with the roles of the officers. You can't, if you don't have a vice chair now. So I think there needs to be some cleanup to that. But I guess what I'm looking for and my question is, you know, if we do pass this tonight and formally join AnyPath Home, when do you think we'll see some clarity on the objectives for the first year? What I'm looking for is, you know, where are those service gaps? Where are we seeing service gaps? What are the primary, primary individuals that we're looking to focus on? Is it, you know, adult homeless men? Is it, is it, does it reach into school-aged children? And then most importantly, what I'd like to see is real clarity on what is the current role of the county? What is the current role of the city and the service providers and where those overlaps are? Just so that, and I think your first graphic speaks to that, this disorder. So that, that's where I'm coming from on it, but I will, will be supporting this. Councilmembers? Councilmember Palmer?
Well, I won't be supporting it. There's a lot of different questions and, and it's been frustrating dealing with the subject with the county. You know, a year ago, we had a meeting and then we were going to do zero homelessness. And now, you know, basically it's been no movement on what we're trying to do in the last year. I asked this morning whether or not we had a report on our January homeless. How many people did we turn away from the warming shelter? Do you know what that number was?
Didn't get that information from the staff. I did get that in January, it was their second busiest month. They had 2,388 guests with 825 checking into the overflow, but I didn't get how many they turned away.
Well, we got a report from the mayor that said it was zero. So that, that, that number there in January. And so that, that's just frustrating when I hear other people say, oh, they're just, all these people being turned away of all the groups that are trying to work together and they're not working together. And that's frustrating to me. You know, to me, the staff time, you say at least a minimum of two hours, I think a week, a month. That takes away from, from your job of, of homes and, and doing this. You only have a certain amount of time. So that's taken away from our staff time to do that. I'd be more inclined to approve it if we had something in there about mental health and drug and alcohol stuff. If we were trying to help people with their, with their needs. But, you know, the shared purpose right now is every person in Olmsted County has a home. I have no idea really what that means. I mean, are you in a shelter? Is that a home? Is, is, is my staying at my friend's house, is that a home? So that's, that's one of the reasons that I'm not a big supporter of this. And, and my understanding from the county commissioners is that they have not voted on this. The HRA Board did, and they're taking money out of their HRA account to pay for this, not property tax. And we'd be funding this with our property tax and that bothers me also. So those are just a few of my problems with this. So thank you.
Councilmembers? Councilmember Keen, go ahead.
Yeah, again, can you clarify? Because the, the action in front of us is just to review and give feedback. I don't know if we really are making a commitment versus, I see down below there's, staff is looking for feedback on member commitment. Are we, is this, is this discussion leading towards a commitment or a vote towards this? Or is it, these are the suggested bylaws and we're having a public meeting where we're giving feedback?
Yeah, suggested charter, looking for feedback, the opportunity to sign on, but recognizing there would likely be a lot of questions before willingness to do that. Is that for vague clarity?
It does help me, but again, I'm, I'm, I'm on, I came with the track of this is somebody else's proposed document that there isn't a decision to approve it or not approve it. But, but again, I don't know if I heard my peers differently, but I thought it was saying like, are we going to make a commitment? And I don't think that's on the table, or do you think it is?
Whether or not we would make a commitment.
Yes.
We're looking for feedback with the option to agree to join on to the charter if comfortable.
Okay, all right. I, that, I guess that's helpful. I don't know what leads our meeting, but it helped me kind of compose this. In order to, you know, make any sort of, even with a governance document, I'm trying to, I'm looking at these nine groups. I did attend, like Councilmember Palmer talks about back when it was towards zero homeless. And there was the, you know, we went through, I think it was a movie that was made about two cities that had slightly different methods. But there, they had a group like this, but there was much more control involved in it. This almost sounds like a communication collaborative as opposed to somebody's going to have authority over the members. Can you talk about what, and I'm not sure if it's been discussed, but is there authority in this? Are we as a city giving some authority towards this group that's going to make decisions? Or are we really just sharing information and communicating?
Yeah, that's a great question. The city's role could be membership of an advisory board, which is really just intended to inform high-level policies or decisions. We wouldn't be doing the work explicitly, which would be done by working committees. That's where the data sharing is going to exist, for example. I would say initial actions include alignment of work. So I would say that communication part would, I would agree that that's sort of the first vision of a starting place of where we can work within our existing resources.
Okay. I, that's what I expected, that it's going to be, every group's existing, like you've got the, you know, one of the groups would be the Zumbro Valley Health. And, you know, the work they do, they're not coming to this with the idea of expanding and doing a different mission. If, if I were to take that to the next step, would the city look for representation that comes from parks or library or law enforcement? Or is it like through community development? What, what is the city's role in this? When we think about the role that law enforcement plays, when we think about the impacts, the, like our library and parks has? Is that the impact to the city for homeless, our response to homelessness? Or are we looking at administrative levels?
Yeah, I would, I would say that has been our impact traditionally, right? In the space of enforcement, the opportunity here is to be a part of decision-making as it impacts on our role, which is primarily enforcement, right? I would say the advisory board is suggested to include an official and one staff. And then, as I mentioned, there would be working committees who are primarily going to be service agency providers. However, I will, I will say we have had conversations with police specifically and how they can be a part of this effort and where data sharing can occur. And those conversations are continuing into next week.
Okay, I, I'm trying to get towards the point of like, how does the city engage with something like this? Is it an extension of what we have been doing? Or is there something new being proposed? I, I'm going to assume there's nothing new being proposed, that there's no new, like department or position in the city that deals with this group. We're really dealing with how we participate, because we do participate in this extended community's response to homeless.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so my, my, my input then would be, as a city representative, I'd be, want to make sure that that law enforcement voice is a part of what our city's thing is, but also library and parks. And I guess I also say community development. But, so, and the other one I'm really struggling with is this, on our packet page 729, this idea of like collective impact and that idea of like taking these disparate groups and organizing them and making it more efficient response. There, there, if, I think that implies to me a level of control as opposed to communication. And I, I have not heard that we are turning over resources to a group that's going to direct those resources.
Right, that's not the intention of it currently. So we'll be guided by a director with membership included, who's, will continue to do their work in tandem with each other to meet the needs. But right, it isn't a funding collaborative and there isn't one individual leading the work. A collective impact model is sharing the resources and making sure they're working off one another.
So there is sort of an underlying thing there that with the right coordination and communication, you'd have a much more efficient response.
Right.
Which implies there's all these problems and I'm struggling to know what those are. I can think of, you know, in, in past years where you've got one group trying to move people out of the park and someone else giving them tents. And is that, is that's an, that sounds like an uncoordinated community response that, could that be addressed through this? Or is that sort of, those sort of behaviors will continue?
Sure, an example I could highlight could be Zumbro Valley Health Center, for example. So they do have particular housing units, but an individual has to qualify them based on circumstances or funding sources. And they don't always get folks who are entering through their system that qualify that. So by joining this larger effort, they can have a better understanding of the community as whole and folks that they're not reaching who could qualify for their housing. So that is an example of resources we already have that we could be streamlined. Once we make those impacts, what can we do next?
Okay, no, thank you. That's helpful. The other question I have is we've in the past been aware of an Echo group out of the county's human services. Do you think there's overlap between what was Echo and what is now this AnyPath organization? Or are they, can they operate next to each other?
Next to each other, one and the same, right? That's another benefit, I would say, of signing on to this agreement. We have this resources, we're going to make sure this resource serves everyone and isn't serving us alone, if that makes sense. So Echo Center is a county operation and the office space could be used for both those needs and AnyPath Home. Does that answer your question?
It's helpful. I, again, I, I want, my view is I could read those as being, doing similar jobs where Echo really wasn't just a response. It was a, it was a traffic. It was a navigator, helping people get to the right things, which is what I think of AnyPath, too. I, I want to just touch on this other thing between the county, there's the county and the county has things like human services. But then there's the, I think there's a separate entity called the Housing, Housing Redevelopment Authority, which happens to be the county, but it's a separate entity. And I think we should think of it that way. The, the HRA is, could, in, in other communities, it could be the city. It could be a disparate group of cities. It doesn't have to be the county. It's just the way we've implemented here in Olmsted County for most cities, not all cities. But I want to differentiate between when the HRA is doing something versus the county. I think those are different things and maybe someone would correct me, but I want to think of those as different actions.
Yeah, it's true. I would say there's a housing department, which includes an arm of the HRA Housing and Redevelopment Authority, as well as sort of their housing stability team. So they're separate branches, they have shared, I guess, goals, but they're different.
Yeah, and I think the way it executes, it makes it look like the same thing. But from a government perspective, it is a separate taxing authority and a separate board, which just happens to be the same board.
Yeah.
It doesn't have to be, but just the way we've implemented it.
Yeah, that's true.
Mayor Norton?
Thank you. I appreciate some of the questions that have been asked. And, and I share some of the concerns that the chair brought up about, you know, needing to understand what's actually going to happen with this. I would just say, you know, this was put on our table in 2019. So I fully understand why Councilmember Palmer, who has been with me the whole time and my neighbor here are frustrated because this is an issue that we have been dealing with since 2019, trying to find answers. And it is all these years later and we're, we're just getting to this point. And I would just say to, to the new folks, we've, we'd had gaps. That's been the problem from the beginning. There were gaps, people weren't communicating. One group's fundraising and people think they're giving money for one thing and they're not. Nobody's talking to each other and it just, it's, it's like everybody has the best of intentions, but without an organization to have them all at the table and work together, they end up working against each other rather than for each other. And we don't fill the gaps that we know are there. So I think this is very important. I hope I can convince Councilmember Palmer to, even though he's frustrated, because I've, I share the frustration. I wish it hadn't taken this long to get here. But this model was one that we found and it was called something else. And I, and I've shared with a couple of you my frustration. It was our local people who wanted to change the name. The program itself isn't being changed terribly from what happens in Houston and other cities. And I hope it doesn't because it's one of the few models that's been very successful. They've documented their success and we can, we can see it. You can, you can go online and found it, find it. It's, it's a functional zero. It doesn't mean there'll never be homeless people that will show up. There are always people that for whatever, all the variety of reasons we all know, become homeless. But they will not be homeless for long because we have a system that's set up that will look at their needs, address their needs, know them by name, talk about them by name, and assure that when housing is available, John gets housing because John's on our list and we know John and we know what he needs and we know he qualifies, right? Without that system, people are just all over and we can't even find them all sometimes. So I'm excited that we're finally here, but I'm frustrated by the slowness that it's taken to get here. And I'm frustrated that, that, you know, our, our chair is saying, our president of the organization is saying, it doesn't, it doesn't explain it well enough. So if we can get that meet, whether it be in here or if the group can get together and get that done quickly, we can't wait another, how many years has it been? Six years to get to the next step. We have to move faster in order to serve people and get them off the streets and into the services they need. And I would just add that I do believe there's a city's role in this. And, and it was really defined quite well in that last conversation. The police are involved, the library is involved, community development's involved. You know, we are part of it, even though traditionally we've not thought of ourselves as part of it because the county does housing. We're not part of the HRA. That's a county thing. The county has to handle this. It's, it's not. The city is dealing with it every single day. These people live in our city, not just the county, right? So we have to put our hands in there and be involved at some level. And I would agree that I'm going to be a little concerned if we don't have the library, which is a city. I mean, the county has a role on the library board as well. But if we don't have the library, we don't have the police and community development isn't, isn't at the table. I'm not sure we're going to have the right people there all the time. So I would just ask that you really think about that in this group and whether it be through committee work or something that you have those folks at the table, because they're the ones that are dealing with the issue every single day. So I do hope this passes. I do hope we can get to a point where we know exactly what our involvement is. And I appreciate the fact that you're not asking for money right now and maybe never, but you're asking for the city to be involved because the city is involved. And we want to be involved in a more proactive way. So thanks.
Councilmember Wall?
Not to pile on, but I share some of the frustrations. I understand this is an organizational document. But when we hear things like the work plan or the objectives will come or will evolve, I just worry that, you know, meeting a couple of hours a month, how many months does it take to actually put together a work plan that will put boots on the ground? I remember attending a, a class. The subject matter was bad, the teacher was worse. It was three hours on a Friday afternoon. By halfway through the semester, we spent half of our time teacher-led. I wonder why nobody comes. wonder why nobody comes? What, where does, wasting our time in that class? I'm not saying this is a waste of time. I just, I'd like to see something happen quicker than trying to organize nine units. That's going to be a daunting task, but we need, just need action, I guess.
Councilmember Miller?
I'll just say, I'm new to this work process, but not new to the question of homelessness in urban areas. And I think as I've seen this process evolve, I see this as a checkpoint perhaps. And my only feedback about the charters, it feels like a mix of charter and bylaws. And I would assume that once we have a charter in place and some formal city participation and advisory committee, then all of these next steps, which start to be the question of why is an advisory committee requiring a one-year commitment or a one year of participation to be on a steering committee, which also seems to have to exist from the beginning? It just feels like maybe those details aren't fleshed out, but I wouldn't see our, us needing to stop that process from developing tonight. But I support the direction. And I wonder maybe if you could talk about, Taryn, where we are in this process from conceptual, looking to other communities, talking about the name, to actually getting this group up and running and making impact in a coordinated way? How close are we to that?
Yeah, great question. I guess one of your questions was if we've looked at other communities, which the mayor touched on as well, specifically the group field tripped, did not join that effort to Hennepin County. They have a model. Hennepin is much larger than us and if anything made us feel able that it could be achieved in a smaller scale here. As far as startup goes, this is one of the checkmarks to make sure agencies want to agree to commit to this and they would be part of creating those bylaws and work plan. Nonetheless, here to receive that feedback, right? One of the first tasks, as I believe I mentioned, on March 10th is creating a weekly consult. So that is underway. Service providers, folks that are involved in case management, share that information. As I also mentioned, next step is meeting with our community action team through the police department and talking about how we can glean the data that they have as well and report back what we do with that data. So that is underway. The work plan is also being drafted by the director. So we really are at a checkpoint and those are a few things that we have underway currently.
And could you just clarify how recently a director has been hired?
March 31st was her first day.
Right, so we're a week into a significant step. And it again, feels like we're on the path to having a real work plan. And again, I haven't been here since 2019 on this board, waiting for this to come, but it feels like we're close. And I wonder if that's, that's how you are interpreting this process as well?
Yeah, I would say we're close. It took quite a bit of time to get to this point. And so it's a matter of when's the right time to make sure we've got a group together to inform the next decisions versus just the group that created it, right? So finding that natural checkpoint, I think we can have different opinions on, but once again, here to receive that feedback.
And I just share the feedback of my colleagues, my neighbors here, talking about all of the city departments already involved in homelessness response. And this feels like a way to have better coordination generally and elected representation. So I definitely support that. And again, I just, I would like this to move sooner. I would like us to have a charter in place, but we're not quite there, right? And I wonder if part of the other commitment, there seems to be quite a bit of talk about data sharing from a case management standpoint. When RPD presented recently at a study session and talked about the resource allocation, it felt like we were missing some way to measure impact. And I wonder if this charter might also include some data opportunities for the city to consolidate how we're measuring success or failure or progress, right? Against resource use.
To kind of follow up on Councilmember Miller, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but so, is there a timeline for the work plan and quarter or month that we might expect to hear about that initial work plan?
I'm not prepared to commit to a timeline. I can share that it's currently drafted, so I feel confident it could be back to you soon.
That's good enough.
Councilmember Fredericks?
I think it's always a good time to collaborate on something positive for our community and for our homeless. Better late than never, so let's roll.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Doring?
Yeah, I appreciate the comments from all of, all of my colleagues here. And I want to go back to something that the mayor said she recognized while she was talking, that there were gaps in the system. I think there's no denying that there are still present gaps in the system. As someone who works intimately with, with groups that are affected by the service providers that you described today, those gaps are very evident to me in my, in my daily interactions with, with the community that we are talking about serving. I have very little hesitancy in signing on and saying, let's, let's be part of the charter organization. I think lots of the concerns that were shared by my colleagues on the dais tonight, we need a city voice there to help shape the charter and have it reflect what we value and what our, our vision is for, for addressing the needs of those experiencing homelessness in our community. If you look at the models in cities across the United States, anywhere from Milwaukee, that's the Under the Bridge document, documentary film that we were invited to see, to Houston, to Fargo, all of these, all of these very successful coalitions of service providers and governmental agencies, they all started out with a big hairy audacious goal. And it was messy to achieve that goal. And I think that, I think as a city, it's, it's time for us to be involved in the mess. That's just where I'm at. So thank you for all the information that you provided and I hope that we, we act a lot sooner rather than later on this.
Councilmember Palmer?
Well, it, it sounds like we have been involved and you've been involved with this already, but I've not heard of a goal. You know, a year ago, and I'm going to preach this again, a year ago, we, we sat down as a group with the county commissioners, said, boy, we're going to be back to you in August, we're really excited about this. And now here we are in April again, doing this. If you had a set of goals, something that we could try, try to achieve, I understand that. In the Tribune the other day, Minneapolis had 21 unsheltered people in their community. Last year, they had over 300 sitting in tents and in shelters, not shelters, but in tents. You know, so if you go from 300 down to 21, and the Olmsted County's had a year here and all we've heard is, well, our paperwork doesn't work, or this doesn't work, or we're going to get a committee. This doesn't sound like to me, my experience with the housing coalition, where we actually get work done. It sounds more of the group that just gets around and says, geez, what can we do? And so, you know, if you say, we're going to do something, have a goal, I think people would buy into it. But if you're using taxpayer dollars and staff time to do something and all we're going to end up with is another year going, well, we still have a system that doesn't work. It's not, it's frustrating. And it, I, it's not just me being frustrated, but it's the community being frustrated. But again, if we don't get anything on mental health and drugs and alcohol, I don't know where we're going to go with this.
Just to, to Councilmember Palmer's point, so I assume when we talk work plan, that a work plan will begin with goals, objectives, and have timelines around meeting those objectives. And, you know, I, I know you weren't able to, to give a timeline for that complete work plan, but is there a, I sense a frustration and expediency from my colleagues? Is there a set of goals and objectives that can be brought before our body sooner rather than later?
I think that's the fair feedback that I'm receiving. I'm a little hesitant to commit before consulting with the group, but I would say that's the intention. So if that's the requested feedback, that's well received.
Administrator Zales?
Council President, Councilmembers, just listening and wondering if what I'm hearing is accurate and looking for a reaction. So at the beginning of this, towards the beginning of the conversation, there was a question about whether or not you're being asked to make any decisions this evening. And really, that's up to the city council. I'm hearing general support to participate and I think the question is, would you move more quickly if you were sharing some motion of support to participate in order to finalize a charter and work plan? Which would mean that you would have someone on a board that would be participating directly in those discussions? Or am I hearing that you would want to wait to do that until after you have more information? My concern would be it may take longer if you don't at least, you don't have to adopt a charter in order to make a motion to participate in finalizing something and beginning to shape the rest of the information that you're looking for. So just putting that out there for feedback.
Thank you for clarifying where we're at. I appreciate it. Councilmember Fredericks?
You know, we're looking to collaborate on this. There's nothing guaranteeing that a lot of the entities that are providing services for our homeless people are going to want to join this collaborative effort? Or are they, are they, are they expressed interest in helping in the, or collaborating?
They've all signed on.
Okay, great. All right. And then I guess, you know, to me, the big elephant in the room is, I'd worked directly with these people myself, I have for quite a few years. There's, there's, there's basically a gap in like, where do you go with a certain sect of them? You know, there isn't, there isn't an answer, so to speak. They're, they're not able to live unassisted, they're not able to function in a safe manner from day to day on their own. There's, there's severe alcohol and drug abuse, which we've all talked about up here tonight. And, you know, the, the thing is, is we're trying to find an answer for something I don't know if there's like an answer for, and it's that, there's a percentage there, I don't know what it is, but there is a decent percentage of the individuals within our community right now experiencing homelessness, that A, probably are not able to hold down a job because of different shortcomings, however you want to word that. And, you know, that's kind of the big elephant in the room. It's kind of like a circle they keep going in. And what is that answer? And it's a lot bigger than just having a collaborative team address that. And actually, you're sitting here on the spot trying to give us answers. And I don't know that this was necessarily in your job description when you started in community development. So I'm just kind of siding up with you. There's, you're, you're throwing questions tonight that I don't know that there's answers for. And battling that whole mental capacity issues and the drug issues and the alcohol issues, it's, I mean, we have, we have great services with, with the landing, the warming center and the Salvation Army. Everybody does have a place to sleep at night that wants to sleep indoors. So we are addressing our things. It ain't like we're in some big failure here. What we're trying to address is the really difficult things that are hard to address. Moving these people into their own private dwelling, I don't know if that's an option for a lot of them. So, and I'm sensitive to it. So that, that's just my piece. You know, I, I think it's great, we all want to get around a table and sing a great song, but it's a difficult problem that needs a lot higher level of commitment to, to get addressed, so.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Miller?
I guess just for clarification to Councilmember Fredericks' question, when we say housing, can you talk about independent housing versus supportive housing versus shelter and what qualifies in this scope of getting people to housing?
What I would say is it means stable housing. So there are a few examples that were thrown out. It doesn't mean in, in transition, it doesn't mean in a shelter, that wouldn't be considered permanent stable housing. It could be transitional housing, whether that's in a unit of any type. So I just want to make that distinction. It's not the same as what we often refer to as doubled up either. So it would be an individual unit that is not a shelter. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, I think so, because I feel like we're having different definitions of housing. And it has been my understanding from past meetings that housing that has a permanent supportive element, has some treatment, has social work built in, would still qualify as housing. But just a place to sleep overnight would not be that checkpoint where we would consider someone housed.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And it's also my understanding, and please clarify, that for a long time, there was this view that treatment was a first step to then being able to access housing. And there's been some move, particularly with other cities like Milwaukee, Houston, to put people in housing first as the first step to stability and data seem to be showing that that's more effective and that seems to be the path we're on here. Is, is that true to the point of alcohol, substance abuse, mental health? I mean, those aren't thrown out, right? It's just saying that people who are first stably housed can have other needs addressed and met?
That's true and correct in that this observes a housing-first model, which still includes wraparound services to address the other items that have been communicated, supportive housing, right?
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Councilmember Keen, or did, did you have a question?
I do, but I thought Mayor.
Mayor Norton, go ahead.
Thank you. I would, I just want to add, I think Administrator Zales was trying to get us to a decision point and what is it you're willing to approve today versus, and maybe it's just a partial, I don't know. But the one thing that is needed, in my opinion, is that the city is at the table now, so that the decisions that are made address the issues that you've all brought up and you've heard from other people and our other departments, whether it be the library or police or community development. And if we're not at the table, the, the goals and solutions may not meet our needs. So that's the one thing I would ask. And I'm going to take just a point of personal privilege here to say, we've been picking on, this has taken a long time, because it's been frustrating. And many of us care deeply about this issue. And I don't want it to sound like we don't appreciate all the work that the county and the landing and Dorothy Day and Salvation Army and the warming shelter have done, as well as Zumbro Valley and blah, blah, blah. You can list everybody. There's a lot of work that's been done. It's not been very well coordinated, which is why we're here today. We need to get to that point. But people have been trying. And I will just, last weekend, I, I'll get teary and I'm so sorry, but last weekend I was notified that a young lady, she was 60, died. She was one of the first homeless people I met and I had an ongoing relationship with her periodically since 2019. I was very sad to learn that she had died. But the one thing I know for damn sure is that we worked hard as, as the broken system that we are to get her housing. And when I ran into her last, she had been housed, she loved her housing, she had volunteer activities she was doing in this community. And that only happened because we all care enough to talk about this issue. So I just want to say, thank you to those who have been working, as frustrated as we are, that it's not perfect. Patty was housed. And I'm forever grateful.
Thank you, Mayor, for sharing. Councilmember Keen?
Yeah, again, I don't, I don't think I can wrap this up, but, but again, the original thing was staff was looking for feedback on, on membership commitment. And I, I think from a consensus, we've heard this, I think we really do have that sort of differences, we're coming at it from different places and saying like, because if you go back to 2019, just having a year-round shelter was a big deal. We've moved a long way in six years. This idea of like, we're frustrated that nothing's happened, it really is a misstatement from, from what we've happened. But to start setting up performance metrics on this is really hard. And that's because it's a really hard problem. And again, I think the important thing here from this council, we've heard enough, I think of a consensus to say, we want to be, participate in the discussion and what the steps are. And we think we do bring, through the enforcement, through some of the things going on, Parks and Library, I think we bring something to the table that should be in the discussion. So I would think, what I've heard here, and I don't, I don't think we need to come to votes and like motions, I think we can go with the idea of this discussion and if anyone wants to play it over, but the staff has heard it and could represent us that way.
I'm going to take chair privilege and ask colleagues if there is interest in a motion. I did hear.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to participate with AnyPath Home and Development of a charter agreement.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Further discussion, Councilmember Fredericks, any more to add?
Happy.
Councilmember Keen?
Just a question, maybe it's to staff, but there is a talk about having elected in somebody else. Is that, is that part of the discussion today, that if we're going to do this as a motion or should we do that more informally?
I think that would come later.
Okay, thank you.
A further discussion, Administrator Zales?
Just to add more to that, I think the staff participation, typically the council has not. has not appointed the staff members to the participation. But as for a, one elected official that would participate, I think we could be ready, if you were ready, to bring that as soon as the April 21st council meeting. And so that would mean reaching out with your interest. And what I'm hearing is that person would be helpful in navigating creation of a charter that you could agree on in order to more formally complete the work regarding what you're participating in.
Thank you for that. Further discussion? Councilmember Wall?
I will go back to Mr. Palmer having brought up more than once now that last August, we thought we had a plan, and now it's April. So I would hope that maybe we would get more frequent reports, either from our council representative or something, to ensure that, you know, next January, we're saying, golly, oh, that one didn't work either. So I will support the motion, but would like, would like really to move forward.
If I may, the new director did explicitly share with me that she looks forward to bringing back an update on behalf of Any Path Home. So she's interested in doing that soon.
Seeing no further discussion, did Councilmember Palmer, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Passes six to one with Councilmember Palmer for voting in the negative. Thank you, Taryn, and thanks for all your work. And I think the mayor said it better than I could, so. Moving on to, we have no council-initiated actions, and we have three ordinance first readings. Go ahead, Mr. Spindler-Craig.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item J1, an ordinance amending section 2-12-1 of chapter 2-12 of Title II of the Rochester Code of Ordinances relating to Police Department personnel. Item J2, ordinance rezoning approximately 1.07 acres of land located north of Willow Ridge Drive southwest and west of Sedg Meadow Circle southwest, pin number 078179047006, from R2, low-density residential small lot, to R3, medium-density residential, and amending ordinance number 4478, known as the Unified Development Code of the City of Rochester, Minnesota. Item J3, an ordinance rezoning approximately 3.89 acres of land located south of Marion Road southeast and west of Pearl Court southeast at 2221 Marion Road southeast, from R2, low-density small lot, to mixed C, mixed-use center, and amending ordinance number 4478, known as the Unified Development Code of the City of Rochester, Minnesota. Moving on to the second readings, item K1, an ordinance annexing to the City of Rochester approximately 49.90 acres of land located south of Wheelock Drive northeast and north of Silver Creek Road northeast and the East Circle, East Circle Drive northeast and Viola Road northeast right-of-way parcels.
Motion on this item?
Move approval?
Moved by Councilmember Keen, seconded by Councilmember Fredericks. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Thank you, Mr. Spindler-Craig. We have no tabled items, and I have no other business here in front of me. Is there any other business, staff, council members? Is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Miller, seconded by Councilmember Fredericks. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.